If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, then we'll ask Mr. Showalter to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
To defy on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've called the meeting to order. Shall we call the room?
Mrs. Singer-Early?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sams?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Tackett?
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
And I'm here, too.
Oh, I didn't say. I'm so sorry. I just swoozed right over you.
That's okay.
So we have a quorum. We knew that Ms. Tackett was going to be out of state this evening, but she'll be with us at the next meeting. And want to thank Lori for doing double duty, both as city clerk tonight and taking care of our paperwork up here, but also responsible for the cameras. So folks that can't be with us tonight and watch on TV at home, Lori's doing both of those things. So hopefully, everybody will have patience and appreciate what she's doing. We've got a large crowd here tonight and delighted to see so many people here. And a number of folks have signed up to speak on the largest issue of importance tonight, the fairness ordinance. But we also have someone who signed up to speak on a different matter, and I thought it would be polite to let Mr. McKay go ahead and have his time before the council and not wait for the time while the other issue is discussed. Mr. McKay, I'll break the order of public sign-in as a courtesy to let you go ahead.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for the extended courtesy and allowing me to speak. I'd also like to say good evening to the residents of Georgetown and also to the council members. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Professor Marlon McKay. I teach at Kentucky State University. I teach music. I've introduced myself to a couple of people here already. And I'm also a resident of Georgetown. My family and I moved here about five years ago to teach at Kentucky State University. And very quickly, we realized that the city was growing at an alarming rate, which is a very positive thing. We've seen a lot of growth in the last few years. Housing developments go up, a lot of job opportunities that are coming and that are continuing to come into the city. But one thing by and large that we've noticed, my family and other families included, is the lack of opportunities for recreation and entertainment for all of the families in town. And so this summer, I took it upon myself to do a rather large project, and I did a tremendous amount of research in a very short amount of time and actually drafted, created, and we're very shortly away from releasing a Kickstarter campaign called Kickstart the Community to build this family entertainment center. And I'll let you take a look at it if you like. It'll be similar to other chain organizations and companies that you've seen, like Dave and Buster's or Main Event or the closest competition, which is Malibu Jacks. I'm sure some of you have visited and had an opportunity to experience that. There's a large reason why something like this hasn't happened here before. There have been bowling alleys or single-purpose facilities, but to create a family entertainment center that really kind of caters to the entire family is quite a large undertaking, not only in size but in expense. This total project is estimated to be about $3 million. That includes the property. The property that we have a letter of intent on currently is the old flea market, which is up on Edwards Avenue. I'm sure you're familiar with the old bingo hall and amateur WWF wrestling that we had in town. It was quite exciting. I saw the Facebook post. But the property itself sits on 4.2 acres. It's a dedicated lot of 150 spaces, and it's approximately 42,629 square feet. It's a large facility, but what will go inside will be mini bowling, an escape room for teenagers or anybody who has the Sherlock Holmes in them and they'd like to try that, a full arcade, an indoor playground for rainy days like this where moms and kids can go and play and hang out and have a good time, laser tag, indoor 3D glow golf, an indoor golf simulator for all the golfers in the room who like to play at Pebble Beach but know they'll never will. So that's all going to be inside, including a cafe for you to enjoy refreshments. And we're really excited about doing this. In the feasibility study that I conducted and did the research myself, we found about 160,000 people, not including Lexington, that are in the surrounding areas west of Lexington and north of Lexington. So that I feel like that's a pretty large enough market to support this type of venture. And we also did a study that showed if we combine everybody in Scott County and everybody in Frankfurt, who would also be able to benefit from this, namely Georgetown College, Kentucky State University, as well as Midway, each person would have to contribute less than $5 in order to make this happen. The rest of it will be paid for by a loan. We're also offering opportunities for investors to get involved in this. If you have any questions and you'd like to find out more information about this, you'll see something that'll come out through news graphic very soon, but also trying to get the word out to churches and places like this that can spread the word. What I need from the city is to just do what you're doing and support it and do what most folks do, talk. So just talk about it, let people know about it. The more that we know about it, the stronger the possibility that we have to make this happen. Projected date is April 2020, so we're moving fast. Very good. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Good luck, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Now we can move on with public comments for the issues that I think most are gathered for this evening. And we've got some folks in the room and I think some folks in the hallway as well. But if we... Oh, that's right. Perhaps we should approve the minutes in the check register before we do that. Each of the council members has a copy of the minutes for our last regularly scheduled meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
And second, everywhere. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And each of you should have received a copy, the latest copy of our check register. If you could indicate if you've received that report. Thank you. Now to public comments. We've got some folks in the room and some folks in the hallway. For folks that are in the hallway, as it becomes your turn to speak, we'll make sure you get in the room. I believe, Andrew, do we have the monitor working out in the hallway? Good. So folks out there can, if they're not in the room, they can at least see and hear what we're doing. What we want to do tonight, what the council would like to do tonight, is take their time and listen to you. This is public comment, and that's the purpose for this part of our meeting. And that will mean that we want to hear from everyone who wishes to speak. So we'll go through the entire list of everyone that has signed up for public comment. Given the number of people who have asked to speak tonight, we would ask that you limit your comments to four minutes apiece. Hopefully, we can make our points in four minutes or less and then yield the floor to someone else so that everyone doesn't take extremely long. But we'll just, rather than have a buzzer that goes off or something, we'll wave a piece of paper at the four-minute mark and if you could wrap yourself up.
White flag.
White flag. That would be helpful. We do ask that all be respectful and, to the extent possible in a function of this type, not to cheer or jeer at particular times, but since the point is for the council to listen to you, we really want to listen to you. And we think that that's the important thing for us to pay attention to. Also, would like to indicate that tonight is a discussion of public policy. And this public policy discussion will lead to the council's consideration of a public policy measure. And that's the way we want to, as much as we can, frame that conversation this evening. Just so you'll kind of know the way we'll go through the rest of this meeting, since so many are here for this one particular issue. Typically, public comment is the way we begin our meetings, and then we go on to the other business items in our agenda. Since there are so many people here tonight that are interested in one issue primarily, we will follow this issue from public comment to council comments and council discussion. That way, we don't ask you to sit for an unnecessarily long period of time. We'll just move all the way through this consideration once we've begun this. So we just won't wait for the agenda to happen. After you all have finished public comment, and it is a public comment period, it's a chance for the council to hear from you. It's not so much of a public debate time. But if there are questions on your mind, I hope you'll ask those questions. And to the extent that we can, when the council begins its discussion in front of you, we'll answer as many of those questions as we possibly can. So that's the way the public discussion part normally works. And then after the council discussion, we do hope to get to the first reading of the proposed ordinance at the end of this conversation. Then we would return to the regular council agenda. So with that in mind, I'll go to the public sign-in sheet, and I'll be calling each of you to the podium in the order in which you signed in. And please take your four minutes and let the council know your thoughts. So first on the agenda is Barry Allen Togel.
Well, good evening, everybody. Is this working or something? I should be speaking? Okay. My name is Barry Togel. I live in Georgetown at 101 Rycarapath in the Haveford community. I've been here since September of 2014 in Georgetown, and I've moved down here from Michigan after some tragic family situations and tried to get things together in my life, which I believe I have because I've met this community, and this community has been there for me from the beginning, and I appreciate it very much. I appreciate what you do. It's a hard job. You have to deal with a lot of issues that not everybody will agree with you on. My reason for being here is not to berate, not to accuse, not to refute, but to discuss what I think is a point gone too far in an ordinance that is already there for us. The fairness ordinance is one that's obviously necessary. It's here to protect people from being discriminated against for many reasons, either in personal life, social life, and business life. I do not think, in my opinion, that we need to add anything to this fairness doctrine that hasn't already been on the books from the beginning. The issues involved are obviously gender, identity, and sexual preferences. The code already lists the differences, excuse me, for dealing with that, applying to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, and/or age, and the variations of that. To add something like gender identities and sexual preferences to something that is very volatile in this time of our country, I do not believe that making into law or codifying or sexual preferences, gender identities, are going to do us any good except cause more division in our country locally, and it should not be something that should be on a ordinance put out as a political statement. That's pretty much what I believe. I do think that nobody, not everybody's going to agree. It doesn't matter to me whether you agree with me or not. This is my opinion, and I will stand by it. I do not believe that this nation needs to be divided anymore. We do not need to create more protected classes. I think everybody is a protected class in this country. Everybody in this country has a privilege, whether you're white, black, brown, green, yellow, or fuchsia. You all have the same rights. You have no more right than I have. I have no more right than you do. And therefore, by putting more detractions on the public, by not allowing people to do what they do normally, not allowing people to make their own decisions in their business and private lives on who or what they want to do with it or who they want to deal with, as long as they're not hurting anybody, as long as they're not berating anybody, and they're not violently attacking anybody, there should not be any additional special preferences to anyone. Now, as far as these gender situations are concerned, I'm sorry.
You're at your four minutes.
Pardon me?
You're at your four minutes.
I damn, really? Already? Time flies when you're having fun. Well, the point is that I think there's going to be different opinions, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
Although it's not what I actually was going to say in the beginning. I practiced it too many times, and I said absolutely the opposite of what I practiced. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next on the sign-in sheet is Rob Muncy.
Hey, I'm Rob Muncy. I'm the pastor of Geno Baptist Church. And reading over the fairness ordinance, it just seemed redundant to me because it already addresses sex. So to be more redundant, to be more like the previous speaker mentioned, like it just seems to be adding more divisiveness to our community. So I think if we could work in a kindness ordinance, that would be great, if everybody could just be kind to each other. And I appreciate the intent of the letter because, you know me, I love everybody. And so I don't want anybody walking away thinking that gender identity is my primary issue and the primary thing that I stand against or for or whatever. But as I preach, the gender identities are pretty clear, laid out in the Bible. And so, and I preach to my church to practice not only love and kindness and generosity, but also holiness and biblical precepts. And so when they go out into the community to run their businesses or whatever, they need to be allowed to, in the kindest way possible, to respect everybody else's views without compromising their own, even in a small business. Larger businesses are much more complex, but I do appreciate what you're doing and what you're trying to do. But to me, it just seems redundant, and we could work on a lot of different things other than changing this. Because one of the red flags that flew up to me in the ordinance was that the exemption of churches and religious groups to practice their beliefs in their own purview, but our purview is our entire community. And so to limit that purview seems detrimental instead of helpful. If that makes sense. And I know I'm a Baptist preacher, and I know I probably had like two minutes left, but that's about all.
Time left.
All right. God bless you guys. I'm praying for all of you on a regular basis, so God bless you in your wisdom. Thanks.
Next on the list is Mark Mackey Proxy.
Yeah, beg your indulgence. Matt Tackett did not be here this evening. He's at the emergency room with some immediate family members. I told him I would deliver his comments for him, if that'd be okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm actually a resident of Fayetteville. I'm a good friend of Matt's, and I am also a coworker of his. This may be a little bit longer than a few minutes, but I will try and edit the citations he's included to cut it down. "Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. It's encouraging to see you here tonight, citizens exercising their rights and proving themselves citizens of our republic rather than mere residents. I salute you for it regardless of your viewpoints. My address tonight is emphasizing to the council the power and the consequence of the authority to create law that the people in this room and others outside have delegated to you. Recently, I was among my fellow citizens who, on Friday last, observed the Kentucky Supreme Court here oral arguments in the Lexington Fayette Urban County Human Rights Commission v. hands-on originals. If you've never observed the Kentucky Supreme Court, I highly recommend it. It's impossible not to be impressed by the spectacle and the grandeur of this institution. You cannot miss the deference and respect afforded by the judges and the lofty office they hold. Offices, literally surrounded by tons of polished granite, marble, gold leaf, and mahogany, the total effect truly conveys an unmistakable message that there is power here. Yet, once you have a moment to absorb the initial, the little reflection reveals the truth. The Supreme Court, as important as it is, is merely commenting on the work that you and others like you do in chambers, just like the one we are in now. Who is greater, the creator of the law or the commentator, the original speaker or the interpreter? My purpose here is to humbly remind you that the authority delegated by the people to you to create law is a fearfully awesome power with, at times, far-reaching consequences. One of the most respected and widely read treatises on power and potential danger of the law was written over 150 years ago by Frederick Bastiat, titled simply "The Law." Bastiat issued a few warnings that the citizen and lawmaker should heed. Quote, "Unfortunately, law by no means confines itself to its proper functions, and the law has acted in direct opposition to its own purpose. The law has been used to destroy its own objective. It has been applied to annihilating the justice that it was supposed to maintain, to limiting and destroying rights which its real purpose was to respect." All of the good intentions of any lawmaker can be thwarted by this tendency of the law to have an effect opposite of that intended. Namely, this ordinance may decrease, rather than increase, liberty in the enjoyment of our constitutional rights and the free exercise of religion and speech. Proponents of the changes to the law here proposed tonight will tell you that any threat to freedom of religion or speech have been covered or protected by the inclusion of the language in the Kentucky Religious Freedoms Act. That one paragraph offers little protection for the citizen, business owner, from this ordinance. Do not take my word for it. Listen to the words of the Kentucky Law Journal. It is one of the top 10 oldest journals in the country in continuous publication since 1881. They did a 19-page meticulous and expert analysis of the one paragraph Kentucky Religious Freedom Act. Here was our conclusion, quote, "Given the history of religious freedom legislation at the national level and in other states, the Kentucky Religious Freedom Act would not likely have a profound impact on religious freedom in the state without significant Ladies and gentlemen, this ordinance has risk. A general promise to respect your free speech or religious liberty...
Mr. Mackey, if you could wrap up your four minutes.
...pales in comparison to the powers granted to the mayor or other authorities in this ordinance. Let's look at the ordinance. I will let you listen to the ordinance later tonight, but he takes pains in quoting the general powers given to the mayor to create an authority without any oversight. Who may enforce it? The mayor?
Mackey, would you please? Everyone's going to follow the same timeline, okay?
I agree. I have two pages left. I appreciate your indulgence. Would anybody else like to hear it?
Everybody gets, we've given everybody five minutes in total. That's what I've asked people to adhere to, please.
You could submit it into record.
I will submit the rest in record.
We'd be more than happy to accept it into the record.
And Mayor, if we could have, if you give that to you for the record, can we have copies of it?
You sure can. And you can either submit it or the clerk can accept it from you now. Either way. Next to sign up is Mr. Wayne Robey.
My name is Wayne Robey. I'm a lifelong resident of Stampin' Ground. It is my belief that passing a fairness ordinance in Georgetown is not the right thing to do. My biggest concern involves a use in other cities and other states... My biggest concern involves the use in other cities and other states to use these ordinances to attack people of the Christian faith. I cite the following examples. On June 6th of this year, the Washington State Supreme Court ruled against Florist Baronell Stutzman in a case pitting her religious beliefs against the state's human rights codes, all but ignoring the U.S. Supreme Court's admonishment to review the case in light of the court's favorable ruling last year for Colorado baker Jack Phillips, owner of Masterpiece Cake Shop in Lakewood, Cali, Colorado. This was a seven to two ruling in favor of Mr. Phillips. Stutzman's lawyers have repeatedly noted that Stutman's, Stutzman employed gay people and has served many gay customers but will not service gay weddings because of her Christian beliefs about marriage. Speaking of Mr. Phillips, he has just been sued now for the third time over his refusal to violate his biblical beliefs. In a similar case on June 17th this year, the high court vacated the state of Oregon's punitive judgments against Aaron and Melissa Klein, owners of sweet cakes by Melissa, who were fined $135,000, which would put most small businesses out of business, for declining to create a custom cake for a same-sex wedding. The source of much of the above information, for anyone's interested, was obtained from a copy of Decision Magazine. This is the July-August issue of this year. It's published by the Billy Graham Evangelical Association. Moving much closer to home just this past week, Hands-on Original had their case heard in the Kentucky Supreme Court for refusing to print shirts promoting the Pride Festival in Lexington, Kentucky. I understand this case has been going on since 2012. There are many other cases out there. These are just a few that I've learned of. It is my understanding that in each case, the goods and services, whether they be t-shirts, flowers or cakes, were available from other vendors, but the decision in each case was to go after the Christians and punish them for standing for their beliefs and religious freedom. In addition to these, I guess just a few years ago, there was a case in Rowan County, Kentucky, where people actually came from out of state because they'd heard that the clerk there would not sign a marriage license. So, it seems to me the whole, the whole premise of their action was not necessarily to get a wedding license, a marriage license. I guess they had done that in their home state, but wanted to prove or go after another Christian for standing for their religious beliefs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list is Stuart Thayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Stuart Thayer. I am a resident of Georgetown and Scott County and have been since July 2012, when I moved here from Colorado. I am here simply to state that I am completely and totally against this fairness ordinance and its adoption. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next on the list is Yvonne Thayer.
I hope you can hear me. Thank you for allowing us all to come tonight. I am Stuart's wife, Yvonne Thayer. I am a resident of Georgetown and I spoke last time when we had the same issue come up. And my opinion has not changed since. I am against the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Jana Strunk.
I don't want to be like Winston Churchill and have a blank look on my face and forget what I was going to say, so I haven't written down. So, that's really embarrassing, isn't it? I just wondered who all was able to go to the Supreme Court hearing on Friday regarding Hands-on Originals and the Fayette County. Yeah, you got a ticket too, huh? Yeah. It was very interesting. I just wondered who all has done the math and who can tell us how much money Lexington's fairness ordinance has cost the taxpayers of Fayette County. It went all the way through two lower courts and up through the Supreme Court. A wise city council would not put that around the necks of Scott County as well, as we've watched that spectacle go on just south of us. A wise city council would not sign up the citizens of Scott County to foot the bill for the attorneys and the court costs all the way to the Supreme Court, nor would a wise city council give one small group of citizens a weapon with which to come after fellow citizens who are following their deeply held religious beliefs. This is an unnecessary ordinance and I hope you will vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Robert Graham.
I'm a retired Baptist preacher, so I can get up there and preach a lot, but I'm not going to do that. But everything everybody said is very well and very good and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Ronald Fannin.
I'll be a little bit longer, not much. My name is Ron Fannin. I've been a resident of Georgetown for over eight years and I am strongly against a fairness ordinance for the following reasons. The ordinance is not necessary. It gives special rights to a small segment of the community. To pass an ordinance such as this that protects one segment of the community and takes away the rights and protections of other segments of the community, such as businesses and religious organizations. My moral values alone stand against the ordinance. I do not force my beliefs and lifestyles on the LGBTQ community. However, they are trying to force their lifestyles and beliefs on me. The LGBTQ community wants laws and ordinances that will force people who do not agree with them to accept their lifestyle. I serve proudly in the military to protect the freedoms cherished by all Americans. As many of you served in the military also. I have a right as an American to not accept the LGBTQ's way of life. I taught my children, my grandchildren, to obey the laws of this great country. If the Georgetown City Council passes this ordinance, they are telling all of us in Georgetown that we have to accept the LGBTQ way of life. I just have one question. Why the rush to pass the ordinance? Why not wait until the case that is in front of the Kentucky Supreme Court is completed? Why not wait? Why do we have to rush and do it right now? That case may resolve many of the fairness issues contained in the ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council and invited guest. I have sent in some questions to one of our council members and one of my questions was, how many actual incidents have been recorded where people have been discriminated in Georgetown? So, that's one of my questions for you. How many actual incidents have been recorded? The second one is, my understanding is that we will utilize the commission in Lexington if there are cases that come up and, which kind of raises another question in my mind. Why would we allow another city to make determinations for us? That may be a wrong statement made to me, I don't know. I also ask the question, how will these be paid for if we have cases? I think you're all familiar with the one before the Supreme Court. The young man who has a family has spent over $250,000 of his own money. That's a travesty. Lastly, my question is, why can't this be put on a ballot for the community to vote for? Why does it have to be the decision, which I know is, is a laborious decision for you all, for eight or nine of you to have to make that decision? Why can it not be put on a ballot for the community to vote on? I am opposed to the ordinance because of my religious background and my faith in the Lord Jesus Christ and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fannin. Next is Ms. Susan Newmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to comment and for your consideration of this ordinance once again. I'd like to think that as a human, as a member of this society, that I don't discriminate against people based on the color of their skin, based on their religious beliefs, based on their ethnic background, based on, as long as it's adult, consensual, human beings, the kind of sex they have behind closed doors. Sometimes, as a human, my bias may come out, a bias may come out. We all make mistakes, but across the board, hopefully, I don't discriminate against large groups. I strive very hard for that in my life. I support a fairness doctrine. I wish we didn't have the need for a fairness doctrine. I wish our culture was such that, as the Declaration of Independence says, "All men, read, men and women are equal." If that, as law, were put into practice, we wouldn't need the later laws that decriminalized slavery, that actually provided African-Americans to be recognized as humans and not property. We wouldn't need laws to give women the right to vote. We wouldn't need laws to desegregate our schools. And now, we wouldn't need an ordinance to have people who love other people differently than you and I may to be treated the same as you and I are. And when people say this affects their businesses, when I do business, I don't ask what your religion is, what your back, ethnic background is, who you sleep with. You're a human, I'm a human, I'm going to treat you the same no matter who you are. What I want, especially in the society we're living in today, is for all of us to be treated fairly and equally. We all have very strong beliefs. When I start doing this, my husband says, "You can tell I'm passionate." So, I recognize in that I'm passionate. You can see I have a very strong belief, if you believe my husband. And I know everybody here is passionate about their beliefs. So, I just want you, and I know you will, to consider this fairness ordinance. And I want all of us to go out and love our neighbors and treat them all equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Signed up as a twofer.
Yeah, my husband.
Carolyn Dennis and John Schaff.
Hi, I want to thank all of you for allowing us the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. My name is Carolyn Dennis and I've been a resident of Georgetown for 28 years. I'm a proud mother of three sons, one of whom is gay. He just came out three years ago, but I've known since he was this big. And I've asked him, "Why didn't you say something to me?" And he said, "Mom, I've known since I was eight years old, but don't you get it?" And his eyes teared up. He said, "I don't want to be gay. I didn't want to be gay." He's been working on it. And I've spoken to many older gay men who tell me that it often takes young people until their mid-30s to get over the homophobia that is so ingrained in our society. And that's, you know, I, I see so many wonderful traits in this young man. He's in graduate school, he's 27, studying to become a licensed clinical social worker. I'm very, very proud of him. He's a compassionate, bright, kind person with many, many friends. And he has talked about working in the area of addiction and drug counseling since that's so very prevalent in this state. And he's lost a number of friends in high school to the opioid epidemic. And I'm proud of that too. Although, I will say, I've had to tease him a little bit about choosing a profession when he has champagne taste on a beer budget, if he goes into that field. As a mother, I want for all of my children the same thing that every parent wants. I want them to be self-sufficient and self-supporting. I want them to love and be loved in return and to be a good person who makes this world a better place. The fairness ordinance simply asks that people are not discriminated against as far as unemployment or employment, I'm sorry, and housing go. That's all it asks. It does not ask anyone to embrace any particular lifestyle, straight or gay. It simply asks for fair treatment and a lack of bigotry for many fine members of our community. You know, in listening to a few of the comments thus far, I've been reminded of civil rights arguments back in the 60s. This isn't about taking away anyone's rights. It's about ensuring that everyone is treated well and equally. Georgetown is a kind and diverse community. I've seen that in so many ways, including how people step up to support the Amen House. For many years, growing up, our boys always held donation drives in our neighborhood in that regard. As my late father-in-law always taught our boys, "Treat other people the way that you want to be treated." And I hope that all of us, I think all of us, try to live by the golden rule. But, as parents, as Georgetown residents, we ask the council for your support of the fairness ordinance. Thank you.
Take the extra time here. My name is John Schaff. As Carolyn said, we live in Scott County. I'm the husband, I'm getting the last word here. It's unusual. I've been privileged to be a lawyer for 34 years, working primarily in Frankfurt. In that time, it's been my privilege to work with the United States Constitution and the Kentucky Constitution quite, quite often, quite frequently. And those are aspirational documents and they set forth the ideas that our founders had about how our country would operate. They had no idea at the time, of course, that African-Americans could be anything other than property, so they weren't specifically included in that document. Nor did they have any intention of allowing women to participate fully in our society. As the last 200 years have unfolded, we have seen the concerns in those areas and we have passed laws in city councils like this and in state legislatures to rectify those oversights or, or those, that lack of intent that they had at the, at our founding. So, that's what you're asked to do with this ordinance, I think, is to rectify a problem. And I would hazard a guess that if you were to survey the 16 cities in Kentucky that have similar ordinances already on the books, that you would not find many people who had had a problem with this. The Hands-on Original case, which I have read, seems to make a rather interesting distinction and I think it's something, if the Supreme Court upholds that case, you will find that people cannot be discriminated against on the basis of their sexual orientation or any of the other classified, protected classes in the sale or the rental of property. The Court of Appeals has talked about the message that the bakery or the t-shirt shop was asked to convey. And they have said that the fairness ordinance is constitutional, but that you don't have to order someone to convey a particular message if you're the... So, I think they're cutting a rather good distinction there. And the last thing I would point out is that the largest employer in Scott County, one of the most successful companies in the world, has a very strong diversity policy. And Toyota has won awards from human rights groups on numerous occasions for their diversity and their workplace equity that they extend to the LGBT community. And so, I would submit that if a company like that, that's as important as it is to Scott County, has such an emphasis on diversity and works so hard to protect that and to treat their employees and their suppliers with fair treat their employees and their suppliers with fairness in that regard, that that's good for the city of Georgetown. We should follow that same model. It's obviously successful. Thank you. And thank you for your public service. I appreciate you all. I know it's a pain to run for election, but I appreciate you all being here. Thank you. Next on the list is Roseanne Claire.
Thanks for this opportunity to speak. This is something that's been brought home to me as a parent and a retired schoolteacher, grandmother, and an aunt to some LGBT youth. My big concern is, as I support this fairness ordinance, is that we have many youth that are being psychologically impacted because they're not in a community that is welcoming and open and loving and inclusive. So if this ordinance passes, then I think that message will trickle down to our children, to the youth, and it will give them this ideal that you don't have to leave Georgetown when you finish high school. Maybe you're gay, maybe you're creative, maybe you want to be a doctor or nurse. You can be part of this community. You don't have to be separated. So I feel like if we can start addressing this on a city level, then maybe it will kind of trickle down to the schools, and there may be less bullying. And some of the children that are impacted, that are having mental health challenges because of being LGBT, maybe the incidence of suicide will decrease. One, it's actually, it's four times the incidence of suicide in LGBT youth. That is something I do not want on my conscience. So I am on the side of fairness, because I think that that is the message we need to send to our youth, our children, they're our future. You're all welcome. We love you for who you are, and we are not making judgments. So please pass the ordinance, and thank you for giving me this chance to speak. Also, I have a handout, if the council would like to see it, on bullying with LGBT youth. Thank you so much.
James Fisher?
I've been in Georgetown my whole life, born and raised in Georgetown. The one, I'm against the fairness ordinance, simply because it takes away my right of a choice. Upon my reading, I was reading all the cases and everything of the things that are going on with the fairness ordinance. And from what I gather from it is it takes away my choice of how I feel about religion. Because if my hands are tied on saying, "Well, I have no more right to make a choice on, well, I have to serve you even though it goes against my fundamental belief," then it is no longer fair for me. But, because I think we all want to be fair with each other. I don't think any -- I know she had the question of how many instances in Georgetown on discrimination. I looked up the same thing. I could find zero, because I was curious, too, like, how many times are people discriminated against in Georgetown? I couldn't find any. I know several establishments that are homosexual-run, I don't have a problem with them. Because I know as a Christian, I'm ordered to treat all people fairly anyway. So I don't understand why this issue's being pushed, because if it's taking away my right, how's it fair? So I just don't understand. I think we all want to be fair with each other, and I know I want to be. But don't take away my right to do something in order to give somebody else more rights than what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy Woblinski?
Thank you all for bringing this back up and letting us have an opportunity to discuss it, first of all. Lifelong resident of Georgetown, I know most of you up here. I did not write an eloquent speech. I had no idea what I was going to say. I honestly didn't think I would even need to speak tonight, but I do. And I can't cover it in four minutes, so I'll just give you the high points. I just feel like, I feel like I shouldn't even have to be here, honestly. I mean, I was raised in a Baptist home. My grandfather was a Baptist minister. I consider myself a religious person. I don't see how these two things are together at all. This is a government policy decision. And it seems pretty simple to me. Right is right. And if we're sending a message that we can't pass a fairness ordinance, I don't know the downside. I guess that's my question. I would love to be able to debate this than to just speak for four minutes. But I don't see the downside of this fairness ordinance being passed. I see a lot of upsides. Maybe you don't think this discrimination happens, but it does. It may not happen to you. It doesn't happen to me. Thank goodness, it doesn't happen to all of us, but it happens. So we can't say it doesn't happen, so we don't need this ordinance. If the worst thing that happens is we pass an ordinance we never have to use, thank goodness for that. I would love that. It'd be great if we never had to use the ordinances we have in place. But that doesn't mean we don't need them. There's a quote from a show, that's my favorite quote, that I have up on my bulletin board at work. And I think it summarizes a lot of what I've heard tonight. It just came to mind as I was listening to some of this. "It's easy to confuse what is with what ought to be, especially when what is has always worked in your favor. Maybe you've never thought about this protection because it doesn't pertain to you. But I can promise you, if you ask any of your gay friends or family, and if you think you don't have them, you're wrong, or you're not a very inclusive person, ask them if they've ever been discriminated against. I know they have. I know they have. They're telling you they have. So please listen to that. It doesn't matter if it doesn't affect you. It affects your constituencies, it affects the people here." And I guess what bothers me is this, this isn't to make things divisive, this is to make things inclusive, this is to make everyone feel a part of this community. I know people who've left this community, and they won't be back, and they would have been an asset to this community. But why would you stay here if you feel like, you know, the last time this ordinance was brought up, when it didn't go anywhere, I was floored. I never gave it a thought that it wouldn't pass, didn't consider it at all. But it didn't, so here we are. So I think the message we need to send is, we pass this ordinance, and if nothing else, it's the message that these young people, and old people, all of us have, that everyone is important and everyone is to be treated equally. If you don't feel like we need it, other people feel like we do. So I think we err on that side, because frankly, if someone walks into your business and you don't want to help them, I don't think you should own a business, but if you don't want to help them for that reason, I would rather that happen one time than another teen commit suicide because they feel like they're not valued. We need to send the message that they are. And we need to be concerned with what kind of a community we want to be. I feel like we're behind a lot of other communities because of things like this, and the discussions I hear are very troubling. I came in a little, you know, hyper wanting to talk about this tonight, but I'm leaving just really, really sad. I'm really sad at some of the discussion I've heard. You can say, "I don't discriminate, but," or "I don't want to judge other people, but." Then don't. Don't discriminate, don't judge other people. Pass this ordinance and show Georgetown what kind of community we are, which is the kind of community I hope we are, that everyone is included and everyone deserves our protection. Thank you.
Next is Jessica Shorkey.
Hi, I'm Jessica Shorkey. I've been a member of the Georgetown community since 2008. And a community is only as strong as all of its members. You can't exclude any part of the community and expect to retain your strength as a community. When we said the Pledge of Allegiance, we said liberty and justice for all, and that includes all people. Why do we need the fairness ordinance? Well, we do need the fairness ordinance. When I was a child, I got a book out of the library, and it was a book about ridiculous laws. And one of the laws was you can't lead an alligator down Main Street on a leash. And I was wondering, why did they make such a law in the community in which that law was enacted? Well, they obviously made that law because somebody had led, tried to lead an alligator down Main Street on a leash, and bad things happened. Why do we need the fairness ordinance? Because people tried to get housing in Georgetown, or tried to get employment in Georgetown, and they were gay, or lesbian, or transgender, or bisexual, and bad things happened. And they were denied housing, and they were denied employment. This is why we need a fairness ordinance, so that everybody will feel that they can live here and work here, and be a member of an inclusive community. I firmly believe in religious freedom for all people, but I believe that a person's religious freedom stops where another person begins. I am pro-fairness ordinance, and please, I hope you will pass this ordinance. It's important to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Frankie Fitch.
My name is Frankie Fitch, and good to be here tonight with everybody. I'm associate pastor of Victory Baptist Temple on Chestnut and Geno Street. Two more years I'll live in this town, for 40 years. I came out of eastern Kentucky, an old country boy, from back in the sticks. But anyway, I've worked here, I worked in this town for almost 20 years with overnight transportation, delivering in every place around this town. Even when Toyota broke ground, Frankie was there. I've seen a lot of things change in this town. I've not been a Christian, I've been a Christian for about 30 years now, and the things that I've seen changed, I have not liked whatsoever. I know when we as Christians voted down the vote for, to allow the liquor sales in Georgetown, now where has that got us? Where are you at now? You've got it on every corner. And my question to you, city council, is this: How much farther will you go? To allow the things that are not moral, the things that are immoral, to take place? How much farther will you go? I don't agree on the Fairness Act, just like my brother from our church a moment ago said about taking away our rights. And that's exactly how I feel about it. That's what they done when they done the vote. They allowed the governor to change the vote. Oh, we'll just put it in bar, or in restaurants and motels. Where's it at? Again, how much farther will you go? I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, it breaks my heart. It really does. Because I see people who are standing for things that is so wrong, it's out there. Things that I'd have never dreamed I'd ever heard, but it's here. And now what are we going to do about it? God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kyle Phannin.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you. I was here two years ago and spoke on behalf of our church family and as a resident of Georgetown. Have a couple of things I'd like to give to you for consideration, since this is a first reading. First, the Bible says that homosexuality is sin, and there are two biological sexes. Moses, Jesus, and the Apostle Paul all agree on that. And so any letters or submissions from pastors to the contrary should be considered in context of what the Bible, in fact, says. Jesus in His grace to a woman taken in sexual sin forgave her, but told her to go and sin no more. Apostle Paul reminded those Corinthians who had been redeemed from a lifestyle of homosexuality that they were in that church and had changed. The Bible's clear on these things. But really, to the point tonight, the ordinance is really not about actions. We haven't heard any. We've heard some mentions of them. They're about our thoughts and our attitudes. It's kind of Orwellian in its sense. This issue is not about unfair actions, but rather attitudes and religious convictions that proponents of this ordinance would like to see changed in our culture. The Fairness Campaign asked people if they agree with fairness. I was surprised that it was only 83%. Should have been higher. 100% should believe in fairness. This is not about fairness, it's about forced agreement. No one would affirm this question if it were proposed. Do you believe the government should force you to agree with my lifestyle? And that's what the heart of this ordinance is. By the way, the ordinance is inconsistent within its own writing. If I understand the ordinance correctly, the government, with regards to bathrooms, can and will discriminate at its own will who may use each bathroom. But a private citizen running a business cannot do the same that you, as the government, are allowed to do. Political double standards are not well-received by the electorate, I would remind you. The ordinance is impotent in reality, but punitive in purpose. Our city attorney was quoted in the paper this week, saying, "Local jurisdictions have the authority to write and pass fairness ordinances that include those classifications with exemptions in state law that would trump local law." This could easily read this way: State law and the U.S. Constitution protect your religious rights, but our local law will punish you for practicing those religious rights. If you choose to defend your rights, you will pay the fine we established, be ostracized in the public square, then begin an endless legal battle where time and again, you will win the actual court proceedings, as an attorney tonight even said, but you will pay a heavy financial cost for it, which is precisely what the proponents of this ordinance want. When the Supreme Court decided that homosexual marriage was legal, we were told it was the law of the land forever settled in Washington, D.C. Yet the Supreme Court settled the U.S. citizens, that U.S. citizens, a cake baker can exercise his religious right enshrined in the First Amendment of our Constitution in the matter of homosexual accommodation. And we're told, "It's not settled, we just need one more law." So the question before the commission is, how will you pay for this? What will it cost? The ordinance says the mayor will set up a commission. Are they volunteers? Lexington spent $250,000 last year in their fiscal 2018 budget. Sometimes politicians forget about how much money things actually cost we, the people. This ordinance is not about fairness, it's about feelings. And I understand that. It's a hard thing to deal with. I deal with it all the time as people come for counsel with sin in their life. Feelings cannot be protected, though, through ordinances. No matter its name and how many you pass, Georgetown is a safe place for all residents, and an ordinance is not needed. It's not an unfair place in need of having its citizens policed by a faceless commission waiting to litigate the first offender of this law. Georgetown is growing at a record pace, all while becoming diverse with culture, complexity, and a wonderful spirit of neighborly coexistence. Why do we need, then, this fairness ordinance? I would remind you, as I close, Mr. Mayor, you all are free to vote on this ordinance however you prefer. But each of the citizens on the next election are also free to vote how they prefer.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Jim Jeffren. Jim Jeffren.
Thank you for your opportunity to speak. I'm a Georgetown resident. I've been here for 25 years, and this is the first council meeting I've ever been in. So we can see there's people that's passionate on both sides. But I have to take a stand from a Christian orientation against this ordinance. I haven't heard anyone speak on any side that doesn't believe in fairness. The problem that I see is when government, government passes a law to solve a problem, but they create more problems than trying to solve the problem in the first place. And what I've seen from the national media, the things that I read, is the Christian community is generally pretty passive. We don't want to be in conflict with anybody. And you've got extremists on both sides, but I've found those that are on the other side that endorse these types of laws, they are the ones that end up targeting Christians to make their point. And it's been said before, and I'll say it again, they don't want us just to agree with them, they want us to like it. They want to control our thought, they want to control our speech. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Next on the list is Scott Mitchell.
Just like to say that, you know, we can have a lot of flowery debate and talk about this, about people's feelings and things like that, but really, all we need to look at is how this has been used in other places. And we've, it's really easy to see, because it's in the news, that people are accused and people are, you know, taken to hearings, and they've lost their businesses and lost their families, you know, homes and things like that, where this so-called fairness doctrine has been enacted. So it's not about-- So it's not about, you know, somebody feeling good about where they go and buy something or whatever, because we can see, it's real obvious that this is about, you know, you, as a fellow just said there, you've gotta like it, or else we're gonna sue ya and take your business, and that's just not what America's about. It might be that we need to look at what, what the free market is supposed to be in a society, and we can see what happens. You know, I'm a Christian, and if I go to a baker, let's say, and I order a cake, and I want it to say "Jesus Saves" on it, and the baker says, "Wait, wait a minute, we're atheists, we don't really, we'll sell ya a cake, but we don't really want to put that on it because we're atheists." You know, what should I do about that? Well, in a normal society, you would think, okay, well, I'm gonna tell that guy, I'm gonna say, hey, I'm gonna tell all my friends not to come here anymore, and I'm not gonna come here anymore and buy cakes from you, because, you know, I've, I feel like I should get my cake. And then I'm gonna go somewhere else and get a cake made. And that person running that business in a free market society gets to weigh it out, and he gets to say, well, I'm sorry, I'm really gonna stand on this, this is what I want, and he gets to make that decision, and I get to go tell all my friends. Or he can say, gee, it's gonna be an awful lot of income I'm gonna lose, so I'm sorry, I'll make the cake for ya, can't we just be friends? And that's the way civilized people solve things. You don't go, okay, I'm gonna use your tax money against you, and I'm gonna sue you out of business that you might've had for thirty years, and your family business, all because I don't get what I want. To me, that's pretty childish, and it, it doesn't need to be in a civilized society. And if we, all we need to do is change the players in this thing, and, and you can see the error in it. I mean, if a, if a black person comes, or a KKK comes into a black person's bakery, wants to order a cake that says something about the KKK, is there anybody in this room that would say those black bakers ought to be forced to make that cake? I don't think so. You know, it shouldn't be this way. I don't agree with having a government be weaponized with tax dollars to knock people out of business, or even what's probably gonna come of it later is jail time or something like that. Who knows where all this can go? Our government is not made for this. James Madison said, "The essence of government is power, and power lodged as it must be in human hands is ever liable to abuse." We should always look to see what the abuse is gonna be anytime we have a law or something or an ordinance that somebody's, everybody's gonna have to live under. Samuel Adams, another one of our founders, also said, "If the public are bound to yield to obedience to the laws to which they cannot give their approval, they are slaves to those who make such laws and enforce them." And we can see that this is exactly what this ordinance is. I was noticing in your, in your, in the ordinance, I read some of it, that says that it is unlawful to retaliate in any manner against a person because he has opposed the practice unlawful by this chapter. And that, to me, that sounds like you have no recourse, you know, you can't do it. In closing, I'll just say that the very ordinance itself, even though you exempted religious institutions, what about the rest of us? You may have exempted religious institutions, but the rest of us can have religious ideas too, and this very thing is discrimination, discrimination against us, because we are not allowed to have a voice in this for our religious convictions. And Blaine Adamson, I talked to him, and he said it was up to 500,000. And so you can see the expense of this, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That finishes the list of folks that we had signed up to public comment. Are there some in the audience that didn't get signed? Thank you. Ms. Gina Keewen. Sorry, I may not have gotten that last name right.
Hello. My name is Gina Kerwin, and I've lived in Georgetown for about a year, and I love this little community. I live on East Main, and just for, I didn't really plan on speaking tonight, so bear with me. I've been trying to gather my thoughts while I was out there. Can I just see a show of hands? How many people are Christians in here? Thank you. Can I see the same show of hands for anybody who's an adulterer? Okay? Anybody addicted to porn? Okay? Anybody a liar? Okay. So the reason I say that is because, can you, I've heard a lot tonight about what's happened with cake bakers in other cities and hands-on originals, and I haven't read what happened with hands-on originals, but I have read what happened with the cake bakers. And can you just imagine if everybody had to go around with a sign on their chest saying what their sin was? I guess those Christians who felt like they couldn't make a cake for a gay couple wouldn't be able to make a cake for an adulterer, or somebody addicted to porn, or a liar either. I am, I am for the fairness ordinance, and the reason I'm for it is because it's fair. And the mere fact that we've had so much and so many people against it, I think speaks for itself that we need it. And if you want to have a wonderful city with music, and art, and all of those other great things that make a city well-rounded, I hate to tell you, but you're gonna have some gay people, and they're wonderful, and you should be really happy to have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Claire White.
Hello. My name is Claire White, and I live here in Georgetown. I went to Scott County High School and was in the class of 2008, and I was pretty amazed by the number of, of my class that came out after they left. They deliberately chose to go to college in another city, another state. Some of them went and studied abroad, and they didn't come out until they left. One of my friends did go to college here in Georgetown. He studied abroad, and he came out over there, and then he came back and went back in the closet, and then as soon as possible after that, he left the state. And his life, his, his life goal was to become a public defender, and we lost a great person because of that, someone who'll never come back to Georgetown. They just, they just didn't feel safe. They didn't feel safe, and they knew they would have very few legal protections for serious problems, and they just didn't feel safe. I heard two years ago from several people making comments, and even from some people here in public office, saying that they didn't think discrimination existed in this city because they've just never heard of it happening. But it exists because out in the hallway, there were people who, when we talked about our friends who had left, there were people in the hallway who said, "Good riddance." So discrimination was right here, and it, it is all over the place. And you know why it doesn't come up in reports? If you look for reports of discrimination against LGBTQ people in Georgetown, it's because there's nowhere to report it to, because it's not against the law. It's allowed, there's no report. But we do know of one story that made the news. It was never reported as discrimination because it's not illegal, but who here has heard of Brittany Martin, who killed herself two years ago after she was denied housing? She was ready to sign a contract on an apartment, and when the landlord found out she was a lesbian, he said he had already given the apartment to someone else after they were ready to proceed with the contract. And shortly thereafter, she committed suicide. Her mother was here and asked the council to please further consider the ordinance, and at that time, it did not go any farther. But that was one, a pretty stunning example of discrimination here in Georgetown. Lexington, the Lexington Human Rights Commission also receives a number of calls from people in Georgetown, saying that they have had, they've experienced discrimination, but they can't do anything about it because that's Lexington and this is Georgetown. And it doesn't get reported or recorded, so you can't find records of it. This is just from speaking to people who work at the commission and hear these phone calls. It does happen. We just don't think it exists because it's not right here on a page, or, or it's not something maybe we hear on the street all the time. But if you look for it, it is there. I'm studying to be a healthcare provider. I can choose what services I want to provide. My choice would be never to work at an abortion clinic, but I don't get to choose who my patients are. I can't say, I'm, I believe these are great services that I'm gonna provide, saving lives, but I don't like that patient's lifestyle. That's a different lifestyle for my beliefs. I'm not gonna give them the services that I normally provide. And that's the difference between renting to someone who, who is not straight versus... Yeah, sorry. No one, no one...
You're out of time.
Okay, yeah. No one in public service should be able to do that either, to choose who they're gonna serve, rather they should be able to choose their service, and that's the end, not choose who they're gonna serve.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Danny Wollums.
Good evening, Mayor Prather and City Councilors. So I live in Lexington now. I grew up in Georgetown, lived here since, from 1990 until 2008, when I stopped bleeding red and started bleeding blue. But Georgetown has always held a special place in my heart. I work now with kids, and I teach every single day. In education, we talk a lot about leading by example. We have to model the behavior we expect out of the students, and we ask the older students to model it for our younger students. And it's a lot about, like that, how I feel in regards to a fairness ordinance. When a city comes out and says, "We want to protect those around us who suffer the most discrimination," it models to the citizens the expectations for their behavior. The culture slowly shifts to be more inclusive, and private citizens, while still able to hold their private values, are forced to look at the boundaries of what is and is not acceptable treatment of other people in the public sphere, and this circles down to how they teach their children. My mother was incredibly worried when I first came out, and that I might be treated differently, and begged me not to tell everybody. This is a sentiment that I am sure she shares with other parents. A city with a fairness ordinance means that parents like mine worry less, and if they worry less, their children are able to be more open, and that means that LGBT plus people have greater exposure, and the myths and misconceptions surrounding their homosexual lifestyle become eroded away. It's easy to limit our conversation about fairness to talking about special rights and special categories and special privileges, but in doing so, we forget that fairness is also about modeling behavior. Growing up in Georgetown, I never once saw two dads raising a child together. I never saw two moms wiping their baby's face at a restaurant. The fact that there were no openly gay parents in town was never lost on me, and it shouldn't be lost on you either. What parent would want to live in a town where they might have to explain to their child, "My love, that man didn't mean what he said when he said that your daddies aren't normal. We have to leave now, but we'll take care of dinner when we get home." Would you, as parents, ever want to put your child in that situation? Georgetown didn't offer those role models that I needed while I was growing up here. And while I have known many of my peers that have come out in high school or college, I have known very few adults in town that live openly with their partners, and still none that are raising their children together. For very long, I couldn't possibly believe that I could be a father and married to a loving husband. It took me, sorry, I gotta call. It took me moving to Lexington and several years away before I was able to realize that my life wasn't an either-or situation. The language around me was different, the culture was different, I could have a family and be gay. I stand here before you this week, asking you to approve this first reading for a fairness ordinance, and to pass it at its second readings, reading when it comes time. One day, I will have a family, my children, or with children, and I want to bring them to the city that raised me. I want to show them my favorite tree that I used to climb up in my old front yard, which I can't because they cut it down. But I also want to take them to Fava's for a milkshake and for some frickles. I want to show them a very special part of my heart, but I first want to know that this part of my heart has taken the time to protect me and my family. Georgetown raises amazing people. Despite that, it is sad how many feel the need to leave because they don't feel welcome. Finally, I ask you to consider the comments that have been made here tonight by the people talking. How many of them are speaking of themselves and of the present? And who is speaking for their kids and for the future? I feel like it's been a stark distinction. I'm not asking you here tonight to legislate faith. I'm asking you to protect me, to protect my family, and to protect the youth, the youth and the future of Georgetown that might want to stay here and raise their own families one day. Wouldn't it only be fair to make sure they felt safe to do that? Thank you for your open ears, minds, and hearts.
Thank you. Tim, that's all that I have on the public signing sheets. If you could take one more look.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Kerwin, and I have been a resident of Georgetown for about a year. Now, this matter is a personal one to me, as I am a member of the LGBT community, and it can be scary entering the workforce as, ah, sorry, it can be scary entering the workforce as an LGBT member. It is not too much to ask for the guarantee to not be fired based on my sexual orientation. Mentions of hate groups such as the KKK has been mentioned as being reasonable to turn away in businesses, and this I agree on. This is different from the LGBT community, as I was born this way, the same way the straight members in this room are born that way. I was born with the attraction to girls. It would be impossible for me to try and attract, to be attracted to the opposite sex. Why should I be discriminated against based on the way I was born? Those against this ordinance will be the same, will be seen the same as those who voted against civil rights ordinance in the past. Why should I be compared to the hate groups purely on the way I have been born? The LGBT community and its allies are not asking for special rights. We simply are asking for the same rights those who are straight get to exercise. This is not a matter of feelings, but life or death. LGBT youth seriously contemplate suicide at almost three times the rate of heterosexual youth. Suicide attempts by the LGBT youth and questioning youth are four to six times more likely to result in injury, poisoning, or overdose that requires treatment from a doctor or nurse compared to their straight peers. This isn't simply, oh, I already said that, sorry. Those growing up in Georgetown should be allowed to feel safe and secure in their future in this town. Georgetown is a great town, but we can make it even greater by making the LGBT community feel safe and welcomed in the community, as most of you here feel. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're anyone from the public that hasn't had a chance to address the council that would like to listen, if not, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Robert Thomas, Bob Thomas. I live here in town for several years now, and my concern with the ordinance would be the idea how we're trying to legislate behavior, which of course is, is behind guaranteeing rights for people. Now, I think, I think that, to me, we're dealing more with something that we have a perception put on us or we can receive from other people. We have to deal with this perception ourselves. I don't know that we can have anyone make us feel good about ourselves. I've had a long, reasonably long and diverse life. I've looked at both sides, and I accept people, and we want to accept people, I agree with that. But my concern is that this legislation could cause, we, it's an idea of thought, and we see legal cases where people's ideas are sacrificed. Religious freedom and the ability to think. I don't have to accept anyone or anyone's ideas, and neither do you. And I don't want to be told I have to, and I don't think a business owner should risk losing his business, or possibly, when things go further, an organization could be sacrificed their own held values. I think people should be treated fairly and given equal opportunity, as we did say in the pledge. We're guaranteed rights, but I don't think the answer for everyone is to be say, "I believe what you're doing is right or acceptable." That's not possible. It's a great idea, but that won't work. People change over time, ideas change, and we need to accept and, and deal with each other fairly. We can all agree on that, I think. We don't want to see anyone mistreated. But we have the idea of the mind and the idea of forced values. I see, that's what I see the problem is here. So, I'm against it for that. I want people to feel welcome here. I do really do and I want to welcome them. But I'm against the ordinance for those reasons, what I can understand of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Michael. Quickly on this topic.
Sure, sure. Like some of the other people, this is my first council meeting. And I'm not going to speak for or against. I was sitting here watching and listening the entire time and thinking about...
Could you step up the volume, sir?
Sure. Thinking about should I speak, given the fact of what I have just proposed to you before this all started? Because deciding one way or the other as a business owner may impact whether or not this business goes through at all. Because if I agree, some won't come. If I disagree, others won't come. And from my perspective, I don't agree or disagree. But I do remember studying about the separation of church and state. And from my perspective, as an educator, I have a responsibility to educate all walks of life. I teach people who believe in God. I teach people who don't believe in God. I teach people who hate black people. I've taught people who hate white people. And as an educator and hopefully a future business owner, I have the responsibility to accept anyone who comes through my doors. And I don't get a chance to judge either. I don't get the chance to make any kind of decisions about you. And so, I'm not for or against. I'm just saying, after listening to everything, I think we need to think about separation of church and state as it may apply to this ordinance. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Michael. That will conclude the public comment portion of this issue for the evening. A couple of things that I would like to point out to the council and to the audience. The ordinance before the council at this time in large measure is primarily updating Georgetown's civil rights ordinance. Georgetown's civil rights ordinance hadn't been updated since the 60s. There's been significant changes in state law over that time. So, the great volume of the ordinance that's before you is actually updating state law. Things that aren't controversial and things that simply need to be done. However, we put this on the agenda as a fairness ordinance in an effort to be very direct and transparent about the outcome of the ordinance. The portion of the ordinance that relates to fairness or the fairness ordinance is actually a very small portion of the entire ordinance. Most of it is simply coming into compliance with state law. Very specifically, what the fairness ordinance does is adds five words to the protections that already exist in state law in Kentucky. Those five words are sexual orientation and gender identity. It creates those two classes. The way we got here this evening is several council members asked us to start looking at this ordinance again. And working with those council members, we have tried to understand the law better than we have in the past. Understand precisely what this ordinance does. And importantly, understand the impact of some recent court cases that have been passed. Those were the things that your council peers, colleagues have been working on. To understand so that they could begin to address the questions that most concern the audience tonight. And there is a common theme to the questions and the concerns that people have raised tonight. The council members have, along with Devin Golden, the city attorney, and Andrew Hartley, who had much of this presentation prepared for us two years ago. What we have the benefit of tonight is several court cases that have made this issue much more clear. The... What the council members have tried to address what is, we think for many, the most pressing issue of anyone in the audience is, and that is, businesses and their owners potentially losing some of their religious freedoms. Businesses and their owners believing that they have to forfeit their deeply held religious convictions to exist under an ordinance of this type. That's been the concern that we heard two years ago. It's the concern that we've heard tonight. And that's been a concern that this council group has been working to understand and address. And I think for the first time tonight, as we begin to answer council members' questions now, we have a clarity about this issue and how the ordinance impacts business that we have never had before. The hands-on original case was appealed to Circuit Court and hands-on original won in Circuit Court. That was appealed to the Kentucky Court of Appeals. Hands-on original won that case. The case is now before the Kentucky Supreme Court and they did hear oral arguments late last week. And we think that decision will be forthcoming very quickly. I haven't talked to any attorney yet that does not believe that the Supreme Court will uphold the Circuit Court ruling and the Court of Appeals ruling. This case law has become very clear that if you are a business owner and you are asked to create content that is not consistent with your deeply held religious values, you can refuse that under the ordinance that is proposed. I want to make that very clear. Court cases have led to that conclusion and we are almost certain that the Kentucky Supreme Court will validate that position with the case that's before them now. What you, as a business owner, what you do not have the right to do is deny making something or selling something because of the people that are asking you to do it. The example our city attorney gave, our working group, that made this very clear. And we can what-if it to death and I'm sure we will tonight. It's our nature. But it's very clear that if... You are a baker and I come in and ask you to make me a wedding cake for me and my husband to be. And I ask you to put mint on top and create that content for me. If that is against your deeply held religious values, you can tell me no and you are protected by law. If you are a baker and I ask you to make me a birthday cake and you tell me no because I'm gay and I'm going to a birthday party with my husband, that breaks the law and it should. You cannot discriminate. You can choose to provide the content that you are comfortable to provide in concert with your deeply held religious convictions and you are compliant with this ordinance.
Mayor, where does that language, where is that language that you're talking about specified in the ordinance?
If you deny that service to someone because of who they are, you are violating this ordinance. Those are the court cases.
On page 10, I believe.
The example mayor's giving is, you know, folks have cited court cases a lot tonight and, you know, we are, this body is a legislative body and the judiciary is interpreting the legislative content. So, as with any other law, you don't, every time there's a court case, Andrew brought this up. Every time there's a court case, you don't rewrite your law. That court case tells future human rights commissions how it's interpreted. So, assuming that the Human Rights Commission's decision which was overturned is then upheld at the Supreme Court level, that's precedent that the entire state of Kentucky will use in applying fairness ordinances statewide.
So, that's section B? Is that what you're referring to, section B?
Yeah, that's it.
The question that I heard was, where is that specification of what the mayor just said? And that's not something that will be written into an ordinance. It's something that would interpret how, it would dictate how an ordinance is interpreted. So, you don't write in, you don't write in these examples. You let, you let the courts hear these cases. And it is unfortunate for anyone who sued about anything that they have to, they have to be the person to set that precedent. But I think, I think the Kentucky Supreme Court will make this decision and then that will give a lot of guidance for especially business owners knowing like the mayor said that they don't have to... I mean, it's back to the First Amendment. I mean, somebody cited asking for a cake that said, "I love Jesus," from an atheist baker. I mean, that goes right back to First Amendment issues, you know? If you don't want to create that content and support that message and it's your First Amendment right to say, to say, "No, I'm not going to create that message." You know, this court case, assuming it is upheld, would say, "You don't have to support that message through your art, but you're not allowed to refuse a person based on who that person is."
What happens with the frivolous cases that do come in? How will those be treated? I mean, and I think that's a big concern. We see the cases going around the nation that it is attacking Christians that have refused to do because of what they feel is their beliefs. So, then whether they have won the case like hands-on original or whether they've lost the case, like some have lost the case, they are drugged through the court system. And some of them are frivolous lawsuits as well because I did get, I think you had made the comment about how many in Lexington had actually done. And Louisville, I couldn't get good statistics in Louisville, but in 15 years, they had had like an average of what averages out, like 15 lawsuits per year. Which is a big city. Complaints.
Complaints to the...
Complaints, yes, thank you. Complaints to that. But out of those, it was like 46, 46% of them had no value or no substance. And so, basically, they drugged somebody that was, didn't do anything wrong, was perceived as, but didn't do anything wrong. And then they had to give up their time, their energy, their money and go through, and go through a hearing and a procedure that cost them. You're not going to go through that and not take an attorney with you and that's going to cost you money and the time. So, how do you prevent that kind of stuff from happening with this? And I think that's the biggest concern really for anybody that's here.
We can't stop, we can't prevent it today, Karen, with the classes that are already on the books. Any one of us in our businesses or our professional capacity can be sued or a complaint be filed against us at any time. If it's a complaint without merit, those are going to be shown pretty quickly. We've been evaluating data. We know that from all the cases that have been heard in Lexington over the...
Twenty years.
Twenty years, that approximately, was it 1%?
We don't have a percentage based on total complaints, but there have been 93 complaints over 20 years in Lexington. And I think the brunt of those were, or the bulk of those, excuse me, were employment claims. I think only seven, public accommodations ones. So, I think, I think the thought that in Lexington, this is being used as a weapon against business owners in a public accommodations, I think that's a bit of a misconception mostly because of, you know, the case that's in the news, obviously. It's the most high-profile case of it. And like, almost everybody who's here tonight, I'm sure, has read the case or knows something about it. But they, I don't think the numbers show that in public accommodations, it's being used that way. But based on the number of complaints for race, religion, all the other classes, and I'd be glad to print the spreadsheet or distribute that at the next reading or via email to the council. It's very interesting to see the number of complaints for all the other classes over those 20 years versus those under the fairness ordinance in Lexington. It's, I think, almost over half the years, race, just in the individual year, is more than 20-year span of the fairness complaint. So, not, not that that's, you know, to sway anybody one way or the other. It is an interesting statistic that I'd be glad to share with the council.
In fact, Karen, it's almost two sides of a different coin. When we look at the data from the Kentucky Human Rights Commission and the Fayette County Human Rights Commission, we see how few of the total complaints are for these two classes. So much so, that some could ask the question more than, "Why is it necessary?"
It's a good question.
We've heard tonight why it's necessary. It, it... Those protections are vital in Georgetown.
Well, let me ask you a question on that because a couple, a couple of folks brought up asking that, like someone said out there, "Good riddance to that person." And so, if somebody says anything, just being rude, I mean, that's just being rude. Just being rude, if somebody says something to the gentleman that talked about, you know, seeing his children and wanting his children and somebody makes a comment about children, that kind of thing. I mean, that's just rude. Is that covered in the ordinance? No, it's not going, that's not going to change in the ordinance. And that's really something for, clear for people to understand.
If we can cure rudeness, Karen, let's pass an ordinance. You sponsor it and I'll call the vote.
I think we would all like to stop rudeness.
Yes. I want to make sure that people understand. People are still going to be rude regardless. I mean, sadly, we just, we just can be that at times from time to time. But so, by passing the ordinance, that will never change people that just happen to be rude or stare or, you know, ask stupid questions, which I'm notorious for asking stupid questions on that, but you know, those kinds of things.
It probably won't stop people from being rude. It will send a very strong message to people that need to be invited and welcomed into the community.
I would like to say something. I've heard from a lot of people on both sides and everyone has been very respectful so far. And it makes me very proud to be sitting here and to be a part of Georgetown. Someone that I truly value and have known for years. And we had a long talk about this ordinance. And in the end, we disagree on what should be done. But this person truly believes that it is okay to discriminate in housing. They believe that and I respect everything about them. But they believe that it is okay to turn someone away because of their lifestyle, because of their religion. And for that very reason, this very reasonable, educated person believes that it is okay to discriminate. It just shows me that even more than ever, we need this ordinance in place.
Tammy, thank you. David's in the yard.
Yeah, I did have a question. On page, I'm just trying to understand the language on it. On page four, sexual orientation means an individual's actual or imputed heterosexuality, homosexuality, bisexuality. So, the imputed, I'm just curious what, like just what you would pick up about somebody? Okay, so you meet somebody and you make that kind of judgment, assumption? Okay, so that's an assumption, okay. And then I had some questions from just the general public that have come to me. They were curious about, and this is kind of relating to this, but also other things. What types of things like this would go on a ballot? Has something like this ever gone on a ballot or is it more an ordinance that the city makes as a law?
Actually, I spoke to Andrew about this earlier and we were discussing it. So, obviously, I think everybody knows that the county has now gotten enough signatures on the petition to get the public question, called a public question, onto the ballot this November. Kentucky is not a referendum state. I think it's about 50/50 what states are. So, in a referendum state like California, if you get enough signatures, essentially, you can get anything onto a ballot. But Kentucky is not a referendum state. So, Kentucky state law by statute kind of delineates what kind of issues can go on a ballot. And this isn't one of those issues.
So, alcohol sales can.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And a number of other issues, but...
That explains it.
Yeah, and I'd be glad to...
No, that's okay. Well, I just always wonder.
It is, it is an interesting question.
Some states, they put everything on the ballot, you know, and then others don't, so... Okay, that's all I have.
I do have one question. The Human Rights Commission will, and somebody mentioned it, and I'm about using like, will you be developing your own, the city of Georgetown's own, Human Rights Commission?
Todd, the intention of this time is to use the Fayette County Commission to hear this word.
Okay. But eventually, is that something that will come to Georgetown, or will...
It's something that always could. Haven't you wanted to address that?
Yeah, and I think several folks referenced this. So we left the ordinance, this section, very open-ended, and the language, the mayor may and the mayor may, any of those issues. So if we would decide to, via interlocal agreement, work with LFUCG on their Human Rights Commission, that would have to come back to the council for approval of an interlocal agreement. So that would, regardless of what happens, regardless of whether we end up working with Lexington, and that's not been solidified in any way, those conversations are still occurring. But if we would work with them, it would come back to the council via interlocal for their approval. And if we would fill our Human Rights Commission that exists but hasn't been filled for 30 years, maybe?
We had a Human Rights Commission on the books, and frankly, have not had it active in this community for well over 30 years.
If we go that route, those appointments to that commission would also come back to the council. So I think folks rightfully brought that point up. So regardless, those decisions will come back to the council for consideration and approval.
Yeah, despite what was inferred later, a rogue mayor cannot take this ordinance and create things without you.
Right, right.
I have a comment on that. That actually met with Devin. Devin made the comment to me that we're looking to go with Lexington as human rights, our Human Rights Commission. I am adamantly opposed to that, under every bit of circumstances that you could possibly do. I know we're not there, and it has to come back to the council. But I do not want to send our people to Lexington, when Lexington is a different type of community than what we are. And one thing, I'm in a smaller town, because I don't want to be a part of a town as Lexington. And their ordinance that applies to them is like 48 pages. So they're not used to our citizens, our nature here. They even have different laws governing the same thing there than what we have here. So I would be definitely opposed to sending, because our people, if something happens, needs to be in front of our people and let them do what they have to do. But on that, if somebody violates the civil rights that's on here now, they would never come to the city of Georgetown. They would never go in front of that body. They would go straight to the state.
The state hears all of our civil rights violations. The state Human Rights Commission hears all civil rights allegations that occur in the city of Georgetown. State law does not cover these two protected classes, so the state Human Rights Commission will not hear cases of this type. That's why we have to decide if we have our own Human Rights Commission to start hearing everything. They're not being heard by people in Georgetown now, Karen. I just need to clarify that for you. So you don't have that today, but just for the audience to understand, that's the way those cases are handled now.
And for the ones the state already covers, we don't have the authority to hear them anyway. They have to go on to the state. Or do we have the authority to hear them here?
If we had a, if we had to build our commission, we would hear them locally, yes.
We would hear them, and then what would we do with them?
We would make it determinate, and they would be appealable like any other, just like the case we've all been citing, the Hands-on Originals, that was appealed then to a judicial body.
Okay. It would go on. They have the authority to go on into...
They would be appealable, yes.
Anything we do locally can be appealed to the circuit.
Okay, great, got it.
I did have a question, just kind of came to me as everybody's talking, processing it. For people, like, say, people that were found guilty, what would the penalties be? Is there like a set list of penalties, or...
There's not a list of penalties that would be... It's not contemplated in any, no jurisdiction that's passed a fairness ordinance really delineates penalties, I think it's within the purview of the commission as it's created, as I understand it.
But the commission would decide?
Right.
They would decide what to do?
Right.
Okay. I'm just trying to be clear on that, what level it would go to. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Just like to thank everybody that came out tonight. This is a tough decision among all of us, and we appreciate every comment that was made tonight, every one of them.
And we really do. I know it's a long meeting and everything, but I really appreciate everybody that's come out. And please feel free to contact us, you know, with any concerns that you have. So we're here to listen.
Structurally, when the city council considers ordinances, they have to be read two different times. What we'll proceed with now is first reading of the ordinance. Council does not vote on the first reading. We simply have first reading in a public session. Then in two weeks, on September the 9th, our next council meeting, we will be available for public comment again. And at that point, we would anticipate a second reading and roll call vote of the ordinance.
Mayor, I have a couple more questions. And they may be strange questions, but we're here, I'll throw them out there. If someone's inside a business, and the business is serving that person, look, I'm a capitalist, doesn't matter to me, as long as you're asked, you've got money. Well, let's say somebody's in the business, and they're waiting on them, but they're talking to somebody else. Maybe they're talking because they're a Christian, and they happen to be in a conversation and saying, "No, you know, this is against my beliefs, I think it's wrong." They don't know the person that is in there is what their gender is, what their sexual orientation is, they don't know. They're having a conversation, saying what their beliefs is. Maybe they even have a conversation with this person, not knowing, and say, "You know, I think it's a sin, blah, blah, blah," and have this conversation. Is there anything, does this cover? Is it still okay to say your beliefs publicly in your business, to say what it is?
Of course it is, yes.
Okay, I want to hear you say that.
Of course, it is still legal to say your opinion out loud. This ordinance does not infringe on your right to speak.
Okay. Because, I mean, I have people that come into shop, and actually, I had a gentleman not too long ago, came in, he bought a flower arrangement, I said, "Well, I hope your wife will like it." And he said, "It's for my husband." I didn't take Snatch's arrangement back and say, "Sorry, you can't have it." And so just nicely give it to him, say, "I hope they enjoy it," and come back and see me again.
That sounds like a smart business lady.
Hi, that's what it's all about, is that. But I just want to make sure that what you say, even in witnessing, I mean, you know, you have people here that are concerned, "What is my freedom of speech? What can I say?"
Yeah, but somebody mentioned it earlier, and not to take comfort in it, but I do want to point out that the state does have a religious freedom law. It is the law of Kentucky. Georgetown cannot trump state law. Because state law exists, regardless of what we do, it does not have to be a part of this ordinance. However, the council members that worked on this ordinance wanted to include, word for word, what the state law is in the religious freedom statute, for the confidence of the public, to know that this ordinance reaffirms your state right to exercise your freedom of religion. And it is not in conflict with that law.
Mayor, could I give an example of what you want to copy?
Let me finish with the council, please.
Okay, all right.
One more question on page 11. It talks about time period. Any person claiming to be aggrieved violation of this chapter has within 180 days. I actually read Lexington's, and it gave 90 days. Why did we, and a couple of others that I saw was 90 days instead of Lexington, or 180, I think Covington's was 90 days. Why did we do 180?
I don't know.
A number of the other jurisdictions had 180 or maybe more, and that's just the number we landed on. I don't know that there was necessarily...
It looked like the ones that I looked at, that it was more common that it was 90 days instead of 100, because that's six months, is it not right?
180 is, yes.
That's six months to go to it, where 90, it's three months if you're going to do something, you've got time to do that. So I mean, that would be something, it's a minor change, not a major change. I'd like to see that changed back to 90 days instead of 180 days.
We reviewed, we looked at all those ordinances recently, but we didn't look at that detail.
And I'll have to look also. I wonder what the provision is on the state level for all other classes, race, religion. So I'd be glad to look at that.
I wouldn't think Lexington would have it in there, but that's what I saw. I saw it first in Lexington, then Covington's, too. Unless they have it separated in their section, as one is talking about gender, and the other one's talking about the other classes, so...
Any other questions or comments from the council? If we could go ahead with first reading, sir, and we'd be glad to hear from you perhaps at the next meeting and public comment. We tried to give everybody that opportunity as thoroughly as we could tonight. And I'd ask Devin to give a...
An ordinance amending Georgetown Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Regarding Discrimination in Housing, Public Accommodations, and Employment. Summary: Amends Chapter 5 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to reflect Kentucky state law regarding discrimination in housing, public accommodations, and employment. Two: Extends protection from discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Three: Provides for exemptions from unlawful employment practices and unlawful housing practices, as well as general exemptions applicable to the entire chapter. Four: Provides for administration and enforcement, prohibits obstruction, retaliation, and frivolous conduct, and imposes annual reporting requirements. Five: Provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time August 26, 2018.
Thank you. So again, on September the 9th is when the council would be expected to take action. We've been at this a couple of hours, but council, like a short break before we continue with the agenda?
Your chair.
Why don't we do that? And any of the audience that would like to stay for the rest of the meeting? We'd like for you to enjoy the civics lesson, but I know you may not.
A bottle of wine, that's what you need, bottled wine.
Louder, Barb, I don't think they...
Will it be online?
Oh, sir. Pardon me?
Will the court ordinance be online?
I can ask that question, I'm not sure. I think, I don't know if you have to come down here to get it, or if they do, but I can find that out. Let me ask that question. Stay right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and call our meeting back to order? Steve, that's assuming I had order to start with, right?
You do, Mayor, you do.
We've got a limited group here now.
Hey Chase, what'd you meant, oh, Laurie's in there. We couldn't have started back, push that door too. So now if we go back to regular order, you all get to be treated by Mayor's comments.
Oh, no.
We closed the comment section a while ago.
We're done. Wave lift, yeah, exactly.
Yes, four minutes, I heard that.
Exactly, you are limited to four minutes.
We'll start waving the paper.
First off, just to remind everybody, I've no...
Everybody, four minutes.
Council, all of us, raise them up. Festival of the Horse is coming up, not this weekend, but the following weekend. Chili Cook-Off on Thursday, the fifth, and then the festival throughout that week. Everybody knows school is open, and so far, it looks like it's going great. David, you can probably tell us how, at least one's going well.
One school seems to be going well.
Good. The big news for the council is East Main Street Extended was finished, and it really looks good.
Looks super.
And we got reports from the first day of school that it was working.
Yeah.
So, congratulations on getting that important project done. Most many of you might have been out there, the first, the inaugural Battle of the Birds went on. Four thousand seat capacity, and there are estimates of six to seven thousand people out there. It was every seat was...
How about if Farm Marshal was at that?
Every seat was taken, it was standing room only, it was, the score was pretty rough, but it was a really good game, really good environment. And that'll grow into something really special. Wanted you all to know that we had a very successful Elkhorn Creek cleanup. Eddie kind of helped run point on that. But we had Boy Scouts and the Junior Civil Air Patrol out en masse, cleaning up the banks of the Elkhorn. And kids being kids, they jump in the water and go out and drag things out of the water. You know, we adults were going to try and stay on the bank, but that went really well, and we're proud of them. That ends Mayor Comments.
Under four minutes, two minutes?
Yeah. So, Chase, under GMWSS.
Four minutes, Chase, you've got the papers.
Do my best. Thank you, Mayor. I have three purchase orders and two contracts for council consideration tonight. If I could run through the three purchase orders, I'll do that. First is a purchase order to Mead Tractor, this is for a Ho-Ram extension on our mini excavator. As most of you might know, anywhere you dig in this county, you'll get bedrock two to three feet under the surface. We have to be able to hammer that rock out at times. Purchase orders for $10,323, and we actually reached out to a number of vendors to get competitive quotes, and nobody would give us a quote on this piece of equipment, other than Mead Tractor. Second purchase order is to KLM Sales and Services for $11,137.50. This is for repair of a pump at, one of our sludge pumps at Wastewater One, that's gone down. We got a quote for a new pump to replace that pump, it was $28,000. We've had a lot of good luck through KLM and Southern Sales on rebuilding pumps, and you'll see that we only got the one rebuilding quote. That's because they had to pull the pump, disassemble it, diagnose it, and if we had to reassemble it, send it off to another, and another to get our three quotes, we would have paid in assembly and disassembly probably $2,000, $3,000, just to get the three quotes. So we just supplied our board and council with one quote to rebuild and one quote for a new pump. We're confident that we can do what we need to do for the rebuild. Third purchase order is of Oka Water Technologies, $48,870. That's a purchase made through a unit price contract that we bid, that's for Wastewater Two, funded by Toyota, and that's just a carbon resin we use in our filtration process at that plant. And we purchased that, make that purchase for $48,000 and change quarterly. So it's time for us to get that carbon resin exchanged out for the treatment process.
Thank you. Is there approval for these three purchases?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. They're everywhere. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chase.
Next, we have bid recommendation for the Spring Court Water Line Extension. That's over in the vicinity of the industrial park and going across the bypass to Amerson. And this is the first project that will go to construction, not including the treatment plant, in our five-year plan. We started design on that last year, it was supposed to be built last year, we got behind on that one, but it is in our five-year plan, and we will go to construction. We received bids for that. Southern Contracting, they got that, they've just completed a project for us for the first time at Mallard Point, so we're very happy that they got that as the low bid. I'll flip through, but that's a contract we'd like to recommend for your approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, and seconded by Todd. Yet there are questions for Chase, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Finally, is, we bid every three years, it's a one-year contract with two annual renewals, I believe, and that's just general parts and materials that we use constantly, regular basis, and so we put those out to bid for unit price contracts, and we get a number of vendors that can supply different things. These are water meters, fire hydrants, valves, things of this nature that we purchase on a weekly basis. So we establish these unit price contracts. You have all the vendors in the packet that we sent that we're going to award a contract to, just for the items that they were low bid on, but again, these are low bids, and it just, having this, these services under contract for procurement saves us a lot of time, saves you a whole lot of time. Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Holly with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions for Chase tonight?
Thank you. Thing, the Board of Commissioners has called a special board meeting this Thursday at two o'clock. They will be touring wastewater treatment plant number one that we are expanding. They wanted to get out and see what's going on at the existing plant. We know we've got to expand for expansion, but they're also looking at the current plant operations, they're going to meet with operators to see what are our issues, what do we need to change going forward. Steve's going to join us, open to the public, but it's a specially called board meeting. All are welcome.
Sounds like a pleasant afternoon.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Let's see, under City Attorney, we have second reading of a zone change ordinance with Mr. Schalter and Ms. Mitchell as the sponsors.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing a total of 2.35 acres fronting on McClellan Circle and Bevins Lane, opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center, and adjacent to and west of Edderwood Subdivision, in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from R2 to B4. Summary: One, rezoning 2.35 acres fronting on McClellan Circle, the bypass, and Bevins Lane, opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center, and adjacent to and west of Edderwood Subdivision, in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from R2 residential to B4 community commercial. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, August 12, 2019. Publicly read, second time, August 26, 2019.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. If there is a question, may Bruce wait all night?
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Singer-Early?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle-Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Schalter?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes, Bruce. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Appreciate you.
Let's see, item nine, Chief Administrative Officer and Municipal Order approving purchase of antivirus upgrade. Tell us what we're doing.
Well... Mr. Hartley? Let's see, let's try to keep this simple. We're going to be purchasing, at the recommendation of NetGain, a very robust antivirus system that will sit on our servers, and it will sit on the individual PCs of everyone, covered under the NetGain Technology One Source Agreement. And this is a newer type of technology that is designed to detect, specifically detect and segregate attacks like malware, ransom attacks, where you've seen a lot of reports in the news lately about city governments being targeted by ransomware, and this is just another tool in the toolbox, and there needs to be many. We'll also be bringing to you at some point, some hardware upgrades, it's just, in order to keep up with technology, you've got to replace outdated equipment, you've got to update to new software. This is a software that requires an annual license, so you pay per user, but it is considered to be the leading industry product, particularly against ransomware.
Total here is around $28,000, is that right?
That's, and we got a discount, that, some of that is professional service to install it on all the PCs and configure it, and the rest of that is license, and we got a discount they knocked off, if we went with three years, instead of one, they knocked off the cost of a year, so we figure we pay for all three years at once, it's in our budget, but we save the cost of an entire year by doing that.
Good.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. If there are no questions, Andrew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I didn't think Eddie needed to sit here all night to assist, to help us with two change orders. They're very, the first one is in Lanes Run Business Park, the last meeting you approved a change order for engineering services, that was to tell us what we had to do with this construction. And this adds $45,000 to the original contract, we still have, after this, we'll have $127,000 in our contingency budget. This one, they do the test where they actually roll heavy trucks across it slowly, and we had two places yield. So, that has to be dug out, roadbed, and built back up. The alternative, we could have avoided this if we had just drilled the entire road, which is not practical to do, to test ahead of time, so this is standard in the industry.
Motion.
Thank you. There a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Hartley? No questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that carries. The other municipal order is a change order finishing out East Main Street Extended, it's very small, $5,936 to extend a curb that traffic was driving over, so they just, they had to move the curb a little bit, and that still leaves us, we're still under budget even with that change order as well.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next municipal order, under dispatch, is a larger number, but it's to our TUSA Radio Consultants that have worked with us from the get-go on the 911 system rebuild. The, this change order is necessitated primarily because we decided not to lease a tower, but to build our own, when we bought the farm and did all that, that had to be engineered differently than what it was originally done. We'll still save money with this property we bought, and we have the opportunity to sell off the bulk of the farm that we don't need. So, this was responding to a change we had already put in motion. There a motion for...
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Todd.
And if no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's see, that gets me to the part of the agenda that is council comments. Todd?
Move-in Day Georgetown College went smooth, yeah, they, they're back in classes, so, lot, should see a lot more people in downtown.
It was, I got to go over...
And we got reports from the first day of school that it was working.
Yeah.
So, congratulations on getting that important project done. Most many of you might have been out there, the first, the inaugural Battle of the Birds went on. Four thousand seat capacity and there are estimates of six to seven thousand people.
Wow.
Out there. It was every seat-
How bad far Marshall, was it packed?
Every seat was taken, it was standing room only, it was, the score was pretty rough, but it was a really good game, really good environment.
Change it real quick, didn't it?
That'll grow into something really special. Wanted you all to know that we, we had a very successful Elkhorn Creek cleanup, Eddie kind of helped run point on that, but we had Boy Scouts and the Junior Civil Air Patrol out en masse cleaning up the banks of the Elkhorn. And kids being kids, they jump in the water and go out and drag things out of the water. You know, we adults were going to try and stay on the bank, but that went really well and we're proud of them. That ends Mayor Comments.
Under four minutes, two minutes.
Yeah. I got time.
Papers up, papers up.
So, Chase under GMWSS.
Four minutes Chase, you got the papers.
Do my best. Thank you Mayor, I have three purchase orders and two contracts for council consideration tonight, if I could run through the three purchase orders, I'll do that. First is a purchase order to Mead Tractor, this is for a Ho-Ram extension on our mini excavator. As most of you might know, anywhere you dig in this county, you'll get bedrock two to three feet under the surface, we have to be able to hammer that rock out at times. Purchase orders for ten thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and we actually reached out to a number of vendors to get competitive quotes and nobody would give us a quote on this piece of equipment other than Mead Tractor. Second purchase order is to KLM Sales and Services for eleven thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars fifty cents. This is for repair of a pump at, one of our sludge pumps at wastewater one that's gone down. We got a quote for a new pump to replace that pump, it was twenty-eight thousand, we've had a lot of good luck through KLM and Southern Sales on rebuilding pumps and you'll see that we only got the one rebuilding quote, that's because they had to pull the pump, disassemble it, diagnose it, and if we had to reassemble it, send it off to another and another to get our three quotes, we would have paid in assembly and disassembly probably two, three thousand dollars just to get the three quotes, so we just supplied our board and council with one quote to rebuild and one quote for a new pump, we're confident that we can do what we need to do for the rebuild. Third purchase order is of Oka Water Technologies, forty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, that's a purchase made through a unit price contract that we bid, that's for wastewater two funded by Toyota and that's just a carbon resin we use in our filtration process at that plant and we purchased that, make that purchase for forty-eight thousand and change quarterly, so it's time for us to get that carbon resin exchanged out for the treatment process.
Thank you, is there approval for these three purchases?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. They're everywhere. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you Chase.
Next we have bid recommendation for the Spring Court water line extension, that's over in the vicinity of the industrial park and going across the bypass to Amerson and this is the first project that will go to construction, not including the treatment plant in our five-year plan, we started design on that last year, it was supposed to be built last year, we got behind on that one, but it is in our five-year plan and we will go to construction, we received bids for that. Southern Contracting, they got that, they've just completed a project for us for the first time at Mallard Point, so we're very happy that they got that as the low bid, I'll flip through, but that's a contract we'd, we'd like to recommend for your approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded by Todd. If there are no questions for Chase, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Finally is, we bid every three years, it's a one-year contract with two annual renewals, I believe, and that's just general parts and materials that we use constantly, regular basis, and so we put those out to bid for unit price contracts and we get a number of vendors that can supply different things, these are water meters, fire hydrants, valves, things of this nature that we purchase on a weekly basis, so we establish these unit price contracts, you have all the vendors in the, in the packet that we sent that we're going to award a contract to just for the items that they were low bid on, but again, these are low bids and it just, having this, these services under contract for procurement saves us a lot of time, saves you a whole lot of time.
Motion Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And finally with the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions for Chase tonight?
Thank you. Thing, the Board of Commissioners has called a special board meeting this Thursday at two o'clock, they will be touring wastewater treatment plant number one that we are expanding, they wanted to get out and see what's going on at the existing plant, we know we've got to expand for expansion, but they're also looking at the, the current plant operations, they're going to meet with operators to see what are our issues, what do we need to change going forward, Steve's going to join us, open to the public, but it's a specially called board meeting, you all are, all are welcome.
Sounds like a pleasant afternoon at this hour.
Yes sir. Thank you.
Thank you Chase. Let's see, under City Attorney, we have a second reading of a zone change ordinance with Mr. Schalter and Ms. Mitchell as the sponsors. Seven.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing a total of two point three five acres fronting on McClellan Circle and Bevins Lane opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center and adjacent to and west of Ederwood subdivision in Georgetown Scott County Kentucky from R2 to B4. Summary, one, rezoning two point three five acres fronting on McClellan Circle, the bypass, and Bevins Lane opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center and adjacent to and west of Ederwood subdivision in the city of Georgetown Scott County Kentucky from R2 residential to B4 community commercial. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication, publicly introduced and read for the first time August 12, 2019, publicly read second time August 26, 2019.
Motion Mayor.
Thank you, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. If there is a question, may Bruce wait all night?
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Singer-Early?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle-Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Schalter?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes Bruce, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Appreciate you.
Let's see, item nine, Chief Administrative Officer and a municipal order approving purchase of antivirus upgrade. Tell us what we're doing.
Well. Let's see, let's try to keep this simple, we're, we're going to be purchasing at the recommendation of NetGain, a, a very robust antivirus system that will sit on our servers and it will sit on the individual PCs of everyone covered under the, the NetGain Technology One Source Agreement, and this is a newer type of technology that is designed to detect, specifically detect and segregate attacks like malware and ransom attacks, where you've seen a lot of reports in the news lately about city governments being targeted by ransomware and this is, this is just another tool in the toolbox and there needs to be many. We'll also be bringing to you at some point some hardware upgrades, it's just in order to keep up with technology, you got to replace outdated equipment, you got to update to new software, this is a software that requires an annual license, so you pay per user, but it is considered to be the leading industry product, particularly against ransomware.
Total here is around twenty-eight thousand, is that right?
That's, and, and we got a discount that, some of that is professional service to install it on all the PCs and configure it and the rest of that is licensed and we got a discount, they knocked off, if we went with three years instead of one, they knocked off the cost of a year, so we figure we, we pay for all three years at once, it's in our budget, but we save the cost of an entire year by doing that.
Good.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. If there are no questions for Andrew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I didn't think Eddie needed to sit here all night to assist, to help us with two change orders, they're very, the first one is in Lanes Run Business Park, the last meeting you approved a change order for engineering services, that was to tell us what we had to do with, with this construction and this adds forty-five thousand dollars to the original contract, we still have, after this, we'll have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in our contingency budget. This one, they do the test where they actually roll heavy trucks across it slowly and we had two places yield, so that has to be dug out, roadbed and built back up. The alternative, we could have avoided this if we had just drilled the entire road, which is not practical to do, to test ahead of time, so this is standard in the industry.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Herbie, no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that carries. The other municipal order is a change order finishing out East Main Street Extended, it's very small, five thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars to extend a curb that traffic was driving over, so they just, they had to move the curb a little bit and that still leaves us, we're still under budget even with that change order as well.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next municipal order under dispatch is a larger number, but it's to our TUSA radio consultants that have worked with us from the get-go on the nine-one-one system rebuild. The, this change order is necessitated primarily because we decided not to lease a tower but to build our own, when we bought the farm and did all that, that had to be engineered differently than what it was originally done. We'll still save money with this property we bought and we have the opportunity to sell off the bulk of the farm that we don't need, so this was responding to a change we had already put in motion. There are motion for, for-
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you Todd. And if no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's see, that gets me to the part of the agenda that is council comments.
Move-in day Georgetown College went smooth, yeah, they, they're back in classes, so a lot, should see a lot more people in downtown.
It was, I got to go over with President Jones and welcome the incoming freshman and it was the largest incoming freshman class since 2010.
Wow, that's great.
So, that's big time good news.
It is, it is.
It's good to see that college coming back.
Anything else though? No sir, follow me.
I had a question, a lot of times I walk by Royal Spring Park at the Sky for Chase, I noticed the water level seems really low despite all the rain we've had.
What rained?
What rained?
Well, the recent rain, but I noticed there was kind of a lot of like, like plastic things and plastic, plastic bottles and stuff, you know, right where the kind of runover is and I just didn't know, how often do they clean that, because somebody had asked me and-
I think part of the time the city cleans part of it and we clean part of it.
Oh, okay.
As far as debris that's come down, trash specifically, it's-
Yeah.
We more look at cleaning it when it starts to fill up with sediment.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's when you touch it.
Capacity related.
Yeah, because I just noticed some bottles in there.
But they, I think prison labor cleared the bank force and when that happened, stuff definitely-
Yeah, that was probably it then, because I remember seeing them do that, I do, yeah.
It helps us with that.
I wasn't surprised at how low it was, because you know, I mean it just-
We have purchased a lot of water from Frankfurt Plant Board in the last few months.
Really, okay.
The, the spring is-
Just takes a while to replenish it.
It's barely producing anything.
Really, I wondered, because it looked just nothing.
Yeah, we're really subject to-
To Mother Nature.
Yeah, well, it's so, I mean, because I remember times it was practically flooding, you know, and then it's just trickle, 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 I'm not even going over that.
Most of the water that we're sending into the system, most if not all, is from Frankfurt Plant Board.
Really, wow.
I remember this, in one drought, we watched the spring gurgle and-
Disappeared.
Disappeared.
Yep.
It's really subject to-
Today's not going to do nothing for your water.
No, it takes a lot to get it back up.
We need this for a few, few weeks.
Yeah, you need it.
Wow, to build you back up.
Thank you.
Anything else Bobby?
No sir.
Here.
I yield my time to Mark.
Mark?
He said he had eight things.
Yes he did.
He said he could beat her to the chipmunk.
Walk all night.
Damn it.
No, thank you.
Nothing else come for the council, we stand adjourned, thank you all.
Dave, I hope you get feeling better buddy.
Yes, your stomach's getting a little round over here.
Worrisome.
Are you sick or just your back? Not just your back. No. Ready. Oh, that lady. Oh, sorry. Couple weeks. Sorry, Chris, oh, that's right, between, yeah. Sorry, you guys are crazy.
Oh no.
Nobody's changing their mind. I told you, I told you.
Should have asked him to turn on the fan.
Actually, I was comfortable tonight, but-
Oh really?
But I don't have any thick or-